And welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evans School District 6. Today is November 1st. It is 4 o'clock in the afternoon and this meeting will come to order. We please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, we call a roll for us, please.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Papas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
All board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, we are here to interview candidates for vacant board member spot left by Ms. Pepper Mueller. And we are have a few protocols before us that we want to just go over with everyone. And that is, we only want to, we ask only the questions included in the questionnaire. We want to make sure that this process is fair for every candidate and that every candidate is receiving the exact same questions. We want to make sure that we ask these questions in the exact same way. We have assigned questions to each board member. And I think I got to talk to everyone before the board meeting. Mr. Norwood, Mr. Norwood, you're going to be question number six. Oh, you got it. All right. Ms. Mash is taking care of you.
Nate, would you like?
All right. Mr. Fall, can you walk us through some of the rest of these protocols?
Thank you, President Matthews and Board Directors and Dr. Pilch. So I provided to you just kind of a short, one through four, just overview of this interview process. As President Matthews alluded to under 1A, please only ask the questions that are included in the questionnaire. It's our goal here to be as fair and equitable to each candidate as possible. We're not to ask additional questions or follow-up questions that might not be asked of other candidates. I understand that you might have some interest in some of the things that they're saying, but really our goal here is to just get the same info or ask the same questions so that each candidate has the same opportunity to respond. Don't provide additional clarification. You can repeat the question and if the candidate truly is confused about what the question is asking, we ask that President Matthews provides that clarification, just so it's coming from the same individual. And again, this process is just to be as fair and equitable as possible. And so our goal here is to not kind of confuse the issue or confuse a question and just allow President Matthews to provide that clarification. So on that note, I understand that you've all received a copy of those interview questions. And I'm just curious if you need any clarification about the meaning of any of these questions. They're fairly straightforward, but this would be a good opportunity to ask now so you just have a good understanding. Okay. So please allow candidates a full opportunity to respond. They have 30 minutes to answer eight questions, kind of like a test. They can take all the way up until that 30 minutes or they can be done in 20 minutes. Of course, if it feels like they're answering a question and it's taking a long time, it might be appropriate for President Matthews just to remind them of the amount of time that they have. But other than that, just give them the full opportunity to respond. And going on to two, before the interview, when a candidate sits down, just try not to engage in interpersonal discussions with these candidates. It's very well possible that you know all of them or many of them or some of them. And don't inform them of the questions prior to them answering them. This is a public meeting, of course. They will have had an opportunity to hear that if they wanted. Of course, we have directed them to not be here prior to their interview, but we just don't want to give them kind of a leg up if they're a later candidate. Same thing with after an interview with each candidate. Amongst yourselves, don't discuss the prior candidate, any pros or cons of that candidate's application. Again, our goal here is to be as fair and equitable to each and every candidate, to give them an opportunity to respond to the interview questions. Do not provide information about prior candidates with the next candidate who is to be interviewed. Again, our process here is to be fair and equitable. And then at the end of all the interviews later tonight, I believe that's around 7:30, 7:45, you're going to have an opportunity to discuss amongst yourselves in this open meeting about the candidates. But we do ask that you don't rank candidates. You are not here to take board action. That will be happening at the next board meeting on November 14th. You know, we are, the purpose of this session today is to interview candidates and nothing else. It's okay to talk about the pros and cons you saw about candidates and about their applications. That's perfectly fine. This is just like a job interview. But we're not here to talk about really issues of diversity. So for example, and these are just examples, you know, whether or not this person would be able to serve because they have a family, for example, or that you want a diverse board member would be another thing that perhaps could look like you are selecting candidates for a discriminatory purpose. Being pros and cons about being part of a protected class, like you want more or less conservative or liberal viewpoints on the board, or you need more or less male members on the board. Those are all protected classes and certainly wouldn't be a reason for why you would be selecting a candidate. It's certainly okay to talk about work history and past experiences serving on boards or nonprofit organizations and things of that nature. And again, just as a reminder, this is wholly an individual choice at the end of the day, but that, but your final decision becomes a decision of the board. And so you can say things like, in my opinion, I like candidate X because of Y. I like candidate A because of their work history and experiences. Things of that nature would be completely appropriate. And then at the very end, don't say something like, they have my vote. That would appear to be taking board action. You will have another opportunity at the next board meeting to actually make that vote and make those decisions. So with that, does anybody have any kind of questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Mash?
I just have a question about the time limit. Like, how strict is that? What if it's been 25 minutes and they're on question six and there's two questions left? Do we like ask them, you have the opportunity to answer one more question? These are the two questions. Which one, like, I don't know, how do we handle that?
I would say that's probably the most appropriate way to respond is to say, hey, you only have five minutes left to respond to the final two questions. Just kind of keep that in mind. We can't really go over with any candidate. Again, we're really just here to provide a fair and equitable opportunity to answer all the interview questions.
And one other question. Are these just for us to take notes? I mean, because it asks for board member name at the top, I didn't know if it's just for me? Yeah?
Well, we will collect these from you. We won't tonight because I would assume you're going to want to keep your notes to do some reflection on the candidates over the next couple of weeks before you come in on the 14th to make your decision. But when you come in on the 14th, we will ask that you turn these all in to us. They are part of a public record now. And so we will need to collect them as we do with any interview. So you just be mindful of what you write on the paper needs to not violate any of the things that Mr. Fall has talked about as well, because the paper could become a public record at some point.
Any other questions for Mr. Fall? I don't hear any, Mr. Fall. I think everybody is pretty clear. Thank you, sir.
I would suggest one thing about the notes you take, that you really just write what you heard, not opinions you have of what was said. I think that's probably the safest thing to do is to write bullet points of what you heard and to stick to what the words you actually hear.
And because this is recorded, we would be able to refer back to the answers in the next two weeks as well.
There's not much need to write too much.
I'll just share, since it's not on the agenda, that two of the candidates have chosen to come in by Zoom tonight. Those candidates are Brenda Campos Spitz and Mariah Foster.
Will that be video or audio only?
It'll be on Zoom. Audio. A video.
A video.
Welcome, Mr. Amaya. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for applying for this position for the Board of Education for Greeley-Evans School District 6. We have just a limited amount of time with you, and so I want to get right to the questions. You'll have eight questions that will be asked by various board members. We have 30 minutes with you and we can't exceed that 30 minutes. So just know that as you're answering the questions, that they need to be roughly three, three minutes a question, something like that, okay?
Sounds good.
So first question is, why do you want to be considered for the Greeley-Evans School District Board of Education?
Well, thank you for the question. Thank you for having me. I believe that as a school board, we're the front lines of educational policy and application. It's also a place where you can bridge with people that may not be like-minded or have the same views, but come together to make a positive change for kids in the community, families, parents, teachers, staff. So that would probably be my main reason.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Follow-up question for you is, do you plan to run for election if you're selected in November of 2023?
I was wondering if that question was going to come up. Honestly, I don't know. I really want to be honest. I don't know. If selected, I would like to see how the board works, the inner workings of the school district, and go from there.
Okay.
I'm not saying no, but I'm not saying yes, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Ms. Mash is going to ask our next question.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District 6 and District 6 schools.
So my children have gone to District 6 schools since they were able to go to school. So I've been involved with District 6 schools since about 2007. My older daughters started at public, public schools, then ended up at Westridge Academy. From there, they went to Union Colony. My son and my younger daughter, who are here with us tonight, they also went to Union Colony Schools. And now they're currently part of the Day Spring Academy family. So I have quite a history with District 6. I've seen a lot of things happen in the city of Greeley and the school district. And I would like to continue to be part of that and see where we can push the district. I want, in my mind, I want people to come to Greeley and I want schools to be at the top of that list. I think that's really important for especially middle-class families, but I really want that to be a top priority for our city. Aside from living conditions or, you know, things that we have in the city, I want schools to be up there. That should be one of the driving forces for people to come here.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Mr. Bentley is going to ask our next question.
Individual board members have no authority, but the board as a whole has a collective authority. What skills would you bring that would enhance the functioning of this board as a whole?
So unlike some of the board members, I don't have a background in education. I've done some undergraduate work myself. But I think what I do bring is I'm very approachable. I think that I work well in a team setting as well as an individual setting. And I think both of those need to intersect, especially when it comes to a board like this. You need to be able to lead and work together and co-lead or even take direction at some I think the other thing that I would bring to the board is that I want to make a positive I wholeheartedly believe that as far as education goes, we could be heading for some hard times and the district and the board needs people who aren't afraid to step up and lead or even be held accountable. And I feel that I bring all those qualities to, to the board if selected.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Sullivan.
When thinking about our Innovation 2030 strategic plan, what focus area are you most interested in having an impact on and why?
I think the area that, when I sat back and thought about some of the questions that might come up, I think the area that I would like to most impact is engagement. I think that's a very big, very big area of improvement. We need to have parents who are engaged. And I would like to, for lack of a better word, drum up that kind of support. Want to bring parents to, to the forefront of education. They need to be involved. I mean, your parent is probably the number one teacher of their children. So the more involved they are with the school district and the board, it can only equal better things for the city as a whole.
Ms. Papas? I'm sorry, were you done, Mr.? Ms. Papas will ask our next question.
So when you consider the District 6 mission, vision, and values, where do your personal values align with those of District 6?
Personally, I think that, and I have, I had written down five keys to education, and my fourth key was faith and morality. And I believe that we need to, we need to bring more moral values to the forefront and not be afraid to, you know, speak your mind when it comes to those things. When I thought about the questions that would be asked, I said to myself that you won't hear me say things like diversity or equity. I think those things hinder what, what we could be. What you will hear me say are things like right, wrong, and what's in the best interest
So there is a follow-up to that as well. What do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
Personally, I, I'm not quite sure yet. I see some things that really interest me as far as like STEM academies and schools that are opening up. So obviously, we're getting bigger. But I think that was one of my driving forces for wanting to be here, was to see where the school is going, or sorry, the school district is going and to be a part of that
Thank you.
Mr. Norwood will ask our next question.
What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues facing Greeley-Evans School District 6 right now?
I think that the most pressing issue with any school district is probably, aside from formal test scores, reading, writing, math, those should be at the forefront of what we're doing. Social etiquettes, stuff like that only hinder from that. So as far as, as far as I'm concerned, I think if we focus on reading, writing, math, sciences, those type of things, we can't go wrong. I mean, it only, it only builds up our community. And when you have a strong school, schools, that helps your, your local workforce and that, you know, that only makes things better for a community as a whole.
Ms. Papas?
So please share your plan for being available to do five to 10 hours of board education work a week.
I, I think, I thank you for that question. I thought a lot about that when I made the decision to do this. It was like, am I, am I ready for this type of responsibility? And the answer is yes. I spoke with my employer, spoke with my family. It wasn't a decision that I made lightly because it is going to affect every aspect of my life. It's going to take away time from work, time from home, but as long as you have it in your mind to balance all, all of those aspects of your life, you know, once you have it right here, then you have no problem anywhere else.
So final question, Mr. Amaya. Is there anything that you would like us to know about you that you haven't had a chance to share? Or do you have a closing comment?
I kind of had a speech in my mind. One of the hardest things I've had to overcome in my life was the passing of my father. And it, it took that to make me realize what I'm capable of. Before that, I wasn't sure what kind of person I was or what my full potential was. I don't have all the answers. I don't claim to, but I'd like to try. I'd like to work with other people to come up with better answers or maybe get to a point where we have, you know, all the answers, even though I know in my mind that's not possible. But I think it took one of the worst things in my life to make me realize what I can accomplish and what I'm capable of.
Well, thank you, Mr. Amaya. That's all the, those are all the questions that we have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for being here. We are back from, from our recess. We are now ready for our second interview. It is precisely 4:43, so we're going to start our interview a couple of minutes early. We still just have 30 minutes for, for this interview. So welcome, Ms. Calderon. Thank you for filling out the, the application. Thank you for being here today. And because we only have 30 minutes, we have, we have eight questions that we will be asking and various board members will be asking different questions, but we have eight questions. So we want to, to make sure that you have as much time as possible to answer those eight questions. So we'll jump right in and begin with the first question. Why do you want to be considered for the Greeley-Evans School District 6 Board of Education?
Great question. You should consider me because I am ready to join forces. I am ready to work together. Actually, I came here 12, 13 years ago and I started beginning, getting ready since then. And came here, my first job without knowing no Spanish was here. My first job ever in United States, well, in Colorado, was in D6. I got a job as a reading specialist with parents. And then I got connected and I started getting another job with families working in the school and how we can bring families together to participate in the school. Then I got another job that it was the migrant education advocate that was on 2013. And in that moment, my life changed. Something very tragic happened in our town that it happened, that flood. And in that time, I was working as a counselor with migrant, migrant students at Greeley West. And in that time, my life was a little difficult because I was missing my family in Mexico. And in that moment, when the flood happened, I realized that my place was here in this, right here in Greeley, Colorado. I discovered so many families, so many people, white, black, yellow, brown, working together to support our children in the district. I remember in that moment, I realized that my work would be working in the community. And I have been involved in the community since then.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. I have a follow-up question, and that is, do you plan to run for election in November of 2023?
That's my plan if I make it today.
Ms. Mash will ask our next question.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District 6 and District 6 schools.
I already did, but I'm going to take this to explain a little bit more. When I moved here, my husband was thinking, my husband is a professor at UNC. And he was thinking like, he would like to move to Fort Collins or Denver. And in that moment, I thought, no, I want to be here. There were a lot of people like me. And now we are talking like about, about 60, 60 or something percent of Hispanic population plus the refugee community. And I began working with them and I realized that this is my town. And the question is, why, I'm sorry, I got lost, but what is the question?
Please share your relationship and involvement with District 6 and District 6.
And I would like to say about this is, since I came here, I have been working very, very hard in the district, not only as a staff, but then as a community member. And I told, I shared with you a little bit about my time as a staff. But then I have been a stronger supporter for 3A. I am now for 4A. I, I, when there is a meeting, meeting, I tried not only to bring, to come here by myself, but when I came, I tried to bring the information to the community that I work. When I, when I came, we have a big group in the community, in the Hispanic community, where we talk and share the information that is going on in the community, especially in the district. And plus, I want to share this, that I have been working with the strategic twenty, strategic plan twenty thirty. And I work especially with something that I am really passionate about, that is partnerships and parent involvement.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Bentley.
Individual board members have no authority, but the board as a whole has a collective authority. What skills would you bring to that would enhance the functioning of this board as a whole?
I am good in collaboration. I am good on bringing people together. Even that sometimes it doesn't seem, but I am a good listener. I like to talk too. And families and agencies working together. I, I don't know. I have a great collaboration and I can bring that to the district, the way I can bring people together.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Sullivan.
When thinking about our Innovation 2030 strategic plan, what focus area are you most interested in having an impact and why?
Perfect. I already mentioned it, and I have been working with partnerships and it's, yeah, making it strong partnerships and parent involvement. That's my passion. That's my, that's the thing, the whole thing that I do in my life and my professional life.
Next question will be asked by Ms. Pappas.
When you consider the District Six mission, values, mission, vision, and values, where do your personal values align with those of District Six?
The families working together, the importance of, of making sure our children are in a safe environment, learning, and being successful.
And then there's a follow-up to that. What do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
When I came here, we were able to see a different, a totally, a totally different district that it is now today. I think a lot of things are happening, are already happening on, on behalf to our students. And I think this street is still need to work harder to bring people together. I think in, in my heart, I totally understand the work that you're doing is great, but it is always room to do better and get people involved. And I could, I would love to see more people in the school activities, not only in this, in the morning, in the academia, but how, how we connect all the lives, all the demographics that we have in town and work together. I don't know if that answered my, your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Norwood.
What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues facing Greeley Evans School District Six?
Thank you. I think not necessarily in order, but one of those is funding. We totally make, need to make sure and work harder to make sure that school, they wouldn't have enough money just to do all the amazing things that they need to do. And, and I know Colorado is one of the worst on budgeting in education. However, there is ways that we can provide money to our district. And it is beautiful, the things that are happening, but we need to pursue and work harder to bring those, this funding. Another issue that I see it and, and it is very difficult, not only here, but nationally is the, the difficulty to find or retain teachers. They are leaving. They have so many pressure on their, pressure on them. There is a lot of work. Yeah, we need to do something to retain those amazing teachers. And then I would like to say that something that I really would like to see and, and I feel like is totally necessary, that district is doing amazing things, amazing services have been provided for the students, but not everybody is getting the information, full and clear and on time information. I would like to see that. And I think it's so important for the time, that kind of community that we have.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Pappas.
Please share your plan for being available to do five to 10 hours of board education work a week.
Well, my director is behind me, so I'm gonna be careful not to compromise. So, well, my job is very flexible. And many times, part of my job is to be in the community. And I don't have a plan yet, but I'm gonna be very available because this is something that I really want with all my heart.
Thank you.
Final question, Ms. Calderon. Is there anything that you would like us to know about you that you haven't had a chance to share? Or do you have a closing comment?
Yeah. Coming here to present or interview or running a campaign is not an easy task. And you put yourself on the front. For those who already did, you know, it can be nice people, it can be difficult situations. However, I came here as a, I can even say it, English learner because I didn't nothing. In my first interview, my job interview here in the district was when an interpreter. And I remember this lady who did my interview, she asked me, how do you want me to think that I am gonna give you a job if you don't even speak English? You need to go and first learn, learn English and then come back. And I said, well, the thing is, I'm gonna be working with the Spanish speaking community, so I don't need English. And it was difficult. I knew that I had to go and look for a job, but I need to have a job at that moment. I got a job. I got the job. I got the job. And it was a beautiful thing. And with this, I'm gonna say that I want to show, not, not only to me, I want to make proud my family there in Mexico, but I want to make sure the refugees, I want to make sure immigrants, they know that we can, we can do it. That everybody has a chance and it's not gonna be easy. And maybe it's not gonna be me, but we are working to make it possible. And that's the thing that I want to show parents and they can feel proud about themselves and encourage their children to be in the places where decisions are happening.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. Thank you again for, for taking the time to be here this afternoon and taking the time to fill out the, the application and being willing to serve. I do want to go through just a few next steps for you. We will not make any decisions today. We will make a decision at our next board meeting on November fourteenth. The person who is selected will then be sworn in, I think, on November sixteenth, if I get that date right this time. Then you'll be sworn in, that person will be sworn in on the sixteenth. Then on the twenty-eighth, that person will be seated. So if you're selected, you would need to be, need to keep those dates available in case you are selected, the sixteenth and the twenty-eighth. And then there's a CASB conference that we attend. It's a professional, professional development for us. I mentioned this in the orientation. But that CASB conference is from November thirtieth through December first and December second. And we're asking everyone to keep those, those three dates available for that conference as well. And so, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Well, welcome back. And we are going to adjourn our recess and interview our third board candidate. It is now five thirteen, so we are a little, a little bit early again. But our, our next candidate is ready and, but we will still just have 30 minutes. So we will conclude, well, it's now five fourteen, so we'll conclude right about five forty-four. So if we can bring this next interview, Zoom interview, and so if we can bring Ms. Campos Spitsy up.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for accommodating me through Zoom today for my interview.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Campos Spitsy. And before we go any further, how would you like us to refer to you? Is it Campos or Campos Spitsy?
Um, Campos Spitsy will be fine.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Campos Spitsy. Thank you for filling out the application and thank you for, for being willing to meet with us and taking the time to meet with us here today. We do only have thirteen, or rather, 30 minutes, and we have eight questions. And so I want to give us as much time as possible to answer, answer those questions. So we will jump right in. And I'll begin with the very first question. Why do you want to be considered for the Greeley Evans School District Six Board of Education?
Yes. So I have benefited from my public school education. I've been in school for 22 years, high school followed by university and my medical degree as well as my master's in public health. So I feel like I'm an expert in being in the educational system. Because of my free K three twelve public school education, I had the opportunity to go on to a four-year university and after that, medical school. I very much value the foundation that my K three twelve public education gave me. And so once I became a physician, I was not quite satisfied just helping families in the exam room. I wanted to do more. And I have always thought that I would do that for championing public education. So a position on the school board, I thought would be ideal. I'm a child of immigrants. My parents are from Central America. They immigrated here in the 1980s. And I was born in California. And I have lived the experience of many of the children in our district, which is growing up with parents who don't speak English, who have difficulty advocating for their kids in the classroom, but who valued from an educational system that did empower them enough to propel myself and my siblings to all go on to higher education. And so I'd like to partner with parents such as my own in the Wells County District Six School System to, to help their children achieve academic success.
Thank you, Ms. Campos Spitsy. I do have a follow-up question to that one, and that is this. Do you plan to run for election in November of 2023 if you are selected?
Yes. And so this vacancy opening was actually a surprise. Starting earlier this year, I was already strongly considering running in 2023 for one of the board positions that would open up next year. And I thought, now that there's a vacancy, that I might as well throw my, my hat in the ring.
Thank you, Ms. Campos Spitsy. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Mash.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District Six and District Six Schools.
Yes. So I am a family physician at the Sunrise Community Health Centers. I've been there since 2014 for the last eight years. I'm actually the only adult physician, physician taking care of adults, I should say, and children, but the only Latin X physician in the Sunrise Community Healthcare System was able to take care of both adults and children. I chose family medicine as a profession because I love to enter of families, of the whole family unit, parents, grandparents, and their kids. And so for the last eight years, I had the privilege of taking care of District Six families. And so lots of well title checks, lots of well adolescent exams, where I get to talk to kids about which school they go to and how they're doing in school, what their grades are, what their favorite teacher is, what their favorite class is, and what they want to be other than a social influencer when they grow up. And I get to encourage families, starting at two months old, to start reading to their kids and the importance of early literacy and getting kids involved in community activities and free library activities and all those things. So I've partnered with students in the district through the Sunrise Community Health Center for the last eight years. And like I said, I was looking for an opportunity to become more engaged in the public school system through another avenue other than my exam room. And I thought the school board would be a great opportunity.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Bentley.
Individual board members have no authority, but the board as a whole has a collective authority. What skills would you bring that would enhance the functioning of this board as a whole?
Yes. So skills outside of medical skills in the exam room, things I could contribute to the board. So my perspective, I think, would be the first thing and maybe the most valuable asset I would bring to the board. Like I said, I grew up in an immigrant household with non-English speaking parents. And so I share that upbringing and that lived experience with many of the D six students, which I believe are, well, about 63% of the students in the district are Latin X. And so being able to partner with these communities and involve them more in, in the student's education. I think of one example from earlier this year, I went to one of the community conversations that the District Six hosted. I was very happy to be a part of that. And it was in this, in the big District Six building, which is kind of a very large building, can be intimidating for some. And we're sitting all in a big circle. And there was one woman who walked in and she came in and she was of Latin X background, a non-English speaker, which I was so proud of the district that at that community conversation, they held a focus group that was going to be in Spanish. But this woman came in and her eyes, you know, were just big. And she was like, I am in the wrong place. And she was looking around, looked a little bit lost, and she approached me. And she approached me because I look like her, right? And she said, do you know if this is where the community conversations are going to happen? And I was able to tell her, yes, you're in the right place. We're actually going to have a Spanish group, so you'll be able to fully participate. And it could just make her feel comfortable right away. I see that every single day in my exam room. I'm one of many physicians at the Montford Family Clinic. And I'm one of the only two who have a full patient panel. What that means is that you can't take any new patients because your panel is full. And I know that that's because I'm the only Latinx provider there who is fluent in Spanish. And it just makes people feel comfortable that I look like them, that I look like their daughters, that I can relate to their experiences and hear their struggles at just a different level. And so bringing that perspective is not necessarily a skill of just a lived experience that I could bring to the group. As far as skills, mentorship outside of medicine has been my passion. I didn't have a straight path from K-12 to university to medical school. That was not my story. And I had a lot of obstacles and learned a lot of lessons the hard way. And I wanted to make the path easier for students like myself who don't come from English-speaking households and just need more guidance. And so for the last 12 years, I've dedicated myself to mentorship. I pretty much continuously have always been connected with college groups, high school groups, elementary school groups in helping introduce students to medical careers, especially students of color or from first-generation college-bound backgrounds who may not have anyone in their family that has become a physician or a physician assistant or a nurse or a dentist or any of those things. And have posted many, you know, Doctor for a Day, Doctors for Diversity, a lot of those types of activities over the years to encourage students to think about medical careers. Because I don't want to continue to be one of the 6% of Latinx physicians when we have 20% of our population in the U.S. who is Latinx. So mentorship has been another skill that I've developed over the years and is one of my passions, working with students and reaching back and helping them out in ways that I wish somebody could help me. So that would be a skill, another passion that I have. So luckily, my parents taught me Spanish as a child because I don't know if I could have learned it as an adult. But I do value being bilingual and bicultural. I think it is always an asset. I tell that to all of my families in the exam room to please don't let their kids forget their Spanish. And so I would love to see our dual immersion program succeed in Greeley, in the Greeley-Evan School District, and would have some insight to provide there. My sister is in the educational system. She specializes in dual immersion. And so I don't personally have a background in it, but, you know, we're close. I have two children who are going to be starting public school very soon. And they are bilingual, becoming bilingual right now. They mostly speak Spanish. And I would love to see a robust program for them. Yeah, I see it in the workplace. So I, like I've mentioned many times now, and one of the physicians in the Sunrise Community Health Center, who mostly only has Spanish-speaking patients. And my medical assistant, who I've worked with for three years now, does not speak Spanish. And she will be moving on. Actually, this last couple weeks was our last weeks together. She's moving to Brighton. But I'm looking for a new medical assistant. And I have begged my administration to give me a bilingual medical assistant because so many of my patients are Spanish speakers. And there is just a paucity if there are few of them. And so I think we live in a world and a community that is bilingual and bicultural. And we should be encouraging that in our children. And I'd love to be invested in that part of District 6 as well.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Sullivan.
When thinking about our Innovation 2030 strategic plan, what focus area are you most interested in having an impact and why?
So I would think the culture portion, it kind of goes without saying from everything I've already mentioned. Making sure that our students and their families feel included, welcome in all our schools. I love District 6's mission to recruit diverse, you know, even administrators, principals, mentors for children who look like them so they can aspire to become teachers. And, you know, the CDL teachers, the culturally diverse or duilingual teachers are even better, for so many of our students who would benefit from that. So that part's obvious. Building the healthcare career pathway, I know right now is really central. I actually have a very good friend. She was a coworker of mine at Sunrise Lupe Rubio. She was a plabatamis there and decided to go back to school and become a teacher. She works at Greeley West now. So now she's a teacher at Lupe Rubio. And she has started a medical club there that is robust and lots of excited students. So I would love to see the healthcare pathway expand to more than just one high school, especially in light of the fact that there is a medical school coming to town through the University of Northern Colorado. We're going to have the College of Osteopathic Medicine, led by Dr. Beth Longenecker, who is a visionary and is all about increasing diversity in the medical workforce. So we are envisioning a whole pipeline program, starting in K-12, going into UNC and coming out through the College of Osteopathic Medicine. And I would love to be a part of that.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Pappas.
When you consider the District 6 mission, vision, and values, where do your personal values align with those of District 6?
So definitely putting students first has always, you know, that's the point of all of this. But I understand that District 6, it is more than students. There's staff and not just teachers. There's janitors and there's our IT. And as Dr. Pilch mentioned at a recent Rotary meeting, often there are staff shortages in several of these arenas. So it's not that we don't want smaller classroom sizes. It's that there just aren't that many teachers coming out to serve our students. But as to the mission and values, putting students first, making sure that we are a quality public school system, that we can be proud that our kids are coming through, making sure they feel included and safe, an anti-bullying community, that values our differences rather than others' students and makes them feel marginalized. So those would be some of my core values. Inclusivity, a safe environment, a welcoming environment in order for students to have success.
And then as a follow-up to that, what do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
Yeah, so I am so excited about Innovation 2030. I think so much of the groundwork has already been laid. I mean, just last week, I believe it was, I went to a Rotary meeting, which I go to the one downtown and we meet at the Union Colony Civic Center. And the parking lot was full of school buses. And there was no parking. I had to go find parking somewhere else. And I came into the UCCC and was like, what's going on? Like, what event is happening that there's all these school buses? And I was so happy to hear that District 6 had brought a bunch of middle schoolers to come see Sugar School, which I had planned on seeing that night with my own children. And it was such a lovely performance and it was so heartwarming, celebrating the Day of the Dead, which is actually why I'm in Mexico right now, celebrating the Day of the Dead with my kids. It's, for those of you who may not be familiar with the holiday, it's a time to celebrate and remember our, not just our ancestors, but loved ones who've passed on. And to think about the things that they loved and to put out, you know, their favorite snacks on an altar and just think about them and remember them as people who are very important to us. So the district, I was very proud to see them bringing all these kids over to see Sugar School, which motivates children to be proud of their culture and not stop speaking Spanish because it's not cool. But yes, like I said, the district already encouraging diversity amongst their teachers, amongst their administration, amongst the board, right? So I believe the district is very much headed in the right direction with Innovation 2030. And I just hope to be a voice to try to give some perspective from, you know, a first-generation Latinx child of immigrants who represents a lot of their students.
Thank you.
Our sixth question will be asked by Mr. Rob Newland.
What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues facing Greeley-Evan School District 6?
Yes, that's a good one. Well, hopefully, we won't have too many pressing issues if the MLO passes. So yes, I'm 4A under fall ballot in just a few days. So I already mailed mine in. But if we can continue to receive funding through MLO and supplement the state funding that we get that unfortunately isn't sufficient, we will have fewer issues. If we don't get MLO through, we will have some funding issues to address. The schoolteacher shortage, I think, is felt everywhere, including our district. How do we attract teachers back to us? How, you know, how do we attract UNC to produce more teachers so that we make that profession desirable again and attractive to teachers and at least maybe not lose them to neighboring districts? I think those would be some of the more pressing issues that I would think. But like I said, if 4A passes, we will be in much better shape with a brighter future.
Thank you. Next question will be asked by Ms. Pappas.
Please share your plan for being available to do five to 10 hours of board education work a week.
Yes, so this one I thought of long and hard, right? I'm a family physician. Doctors tend to be busy. I'm a mother of two. But I have always known that I wanted to be involved in the community and I always knew it would be through public education. In anticipation of running next year, I have brought my hours down. And actually, I did this a couple of years ago. So I am actually a part-time physician. One of my days off is actually Monday. And my husband has the day off as well. We've been married 15 years and he's my, you know, number one cheerleader. He's the man behind the wheel. And he is very happy to be providing child care on Mondays for us in order for me to fully participate in the board, on the board. I've actually on purpose turned down a few offers to be on other, you know, worthwhile boards, including the Immigrant Refugee Centers of Northern Colorado, you know, as well as some other boards in the community. I knew I wanted to invest my energy in education specifically. It's always been my passion. So I've been waiting for the moment, basically, for years now. Residency took up some of my time and then my first two years of child rearing. But now that those are done, I am fully committed to at least give 10 hours of my time per week for this position.
Final question, Ms. Campos Spitsi. Is there anything that you would like us to know that you haven't had a chance to share? Or do you have a closing comment?
So I guess I sincerely want the district to be successful. My children will be going through District 6. My husband and I are committed to public education. Obviously, we're both physicians. We could afford a private school for our children. You know, we could afford to drive them to Fort Collins or Windsor. We don't want to. We want our children to go through public education in Wells County. We are proud to be members of this county. We fell in love with Greeley eight years ago when we came here for our residency training. We thought the diversity here was so unique and refreshing and just the community atmosphere and the family-friendly environment. We just knew we would stay here until retirement and beyond. So I am invested not just as a community member who takes care of a lot of these kids in clinic and has actually birthed, well, my own two, but I used to deliver babies for, oh goodness, like five years. But I stopped doing that two years ago. Anyway, many District 6 children that have come through my clinic, I'm invested in them, but also invested in my own children. I know I can come off as very Latin-centric. I would like the board to know that I am interested in the success of all children. My own two children are biracial. My husband is one of the strongest allies we have in the community, Bryce Spitsy, which is where my weird, you know, aftermending comes from. But my children look a lot more like him than they do me. And they were born into privilege, right? They have two physician parents. And so I represent the little girl that I was, you know, growing up in a one-bedroom apartment near Los Angeles with six family members and who got to live the American dream through my parents. Because they were able to come to this country and become documented citizens, I was given the opportunity to become a doctor. And I don't take that lightly at all. I'm very proud to be an American. I'm very proud to live the American dream and that my parents are living a very comfortable retirement because of this country. And I know I come off strongly as only caring about brown children. And I just want you to know that that's not true. I care about all children's success. And I want that to be clear.
Thank you, Ms. Campos Spitsy. I do want to just let you know about a few dates and explain what the next steps are. First, we will not be making any decisions today. Our board will make a decision at our next board meeting on November 14th. Whoever is selected needs to be available, should you be selected? You need to be available on November 16th. That is when the swearing-in will happen that afternoon. And then that person will be seated with the board for the next board meeting or at the next board meeting on November 28th. That's the board meeting right after Thanksgiving. And then our hope is that whoever is selected will be available November 30th, December 1st, and December 2nd for CASB Conference. And that is our professional development conference that we attend annually. Our hope is that whoever we select will have that time available. So those are our next steps. And again, we want to thank you for applying for this position and thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you so much. And thank you again for accommodating me through Zoom. That was very gracious of you.
Thank you. Welcome back. We are back from our recess. And it is 6:14. And we'll proceed with our next interview of board candidates, interviewing Ms. Jamie Clapp. And first of all, Ms. Clapp, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, you are.
Just want to be sure. Well, welcome and thank you for applying and taking the time to apply. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. We have 30 minutes set aside for your interview. We have eight questions, so we want to make sure that you have plenty of time to answer all eight questions. So we're going to jump right in, okay?
Okay.
All right. First question is, why do you want to be considered, to be considered for the Greeley-Evan School District 6 Board of Education?
I've lived in Greeley for 15 years, going on 16. I began at the Boys and Girls Club here. I was a unit director. My undergrad degree is in music education. I taught. I taught. What I'm really seeing is that it takes all of us to help grow kids up. And I feel like my influence can be better utilized or best utilized moving forward in this area. I've not done this before. I've had a lot of influence in a lot of different arenas, but not in this way. And I feel that I come with a lot of experience, a lot of information, a lot of research, a lot of background into understanding the dynamics of family, kids, relationships. And I felt like this was the next step for me in being able to have a larger impact and influence on our community in Greeley.
I want to ask just a quick follow-up question.
Sure.
If you're finished. And that is, do you plan to run for election if you're selected in November of 2023?
I am not sure about that. It's an interesting thing. I've never considered myself as a political candidate for anything. I'm all about making impact on the ground level and person-to-person, family-to-family, and in the community. If that opens, if that door opens for me and it's something that my passion turns that direction, then I will pursue it at that time.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Natalie Mash.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District Six and District Six schools.
My relationship is through mental health and substance use treatment and crisis intervention. Most of my experience in Greeley has been through that field. I began at the Boys and Girls Club and, of course, had impact on the communities that way and working with children and families. But most of my experience in Greeley has been through the crisis system and the crisis response system, responding to all nature of issues with children and families.
Thank you, Ms. Clapp. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Kyle Bentley.
Individual board members have no authority, but the board as a whole has a collective authority. What skills would you bring that would enhance the functioning of this board as a whole?
I believe in teamwork. I believe that everybody has a specific skill set that they come and they offer as part of a team. That's one reason why I do what I do. I don't have all the answers on scene, but I'm pretty sure that somebody does. And we work really well together when we do respond, and I feel that way in general with the board. I don't know of anybody that has my background that's a part of the board at this point and/or my research, where I come from in terms of crisis response and what's affecting our youth and our families at this point.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Sullivan.
When thinking about our Innovation 2030 strategic plan, what focus area are you most interested in having an impact and why?
I'm always going to come from the perspective of health for kids. I'm always going to come from that background. The data is incomplete for 2020. It's going to be because we were unable to collect the way that we usually do. But all of our suicides have gone up across the board, even though it looks pretty good right now. Our data is not going to show the real facts until probably 2024. My concern is that we have not seen the end of overdoses and suicides in kids, so I will always come from that perspective of my great concern for the future of our community and for our nation with regards to deaths in our youth, specifically the ages of 12 to 20 years old. I have more data on that, but I'm not sure that's relevant at this time. But there's a lot of data that supports that it's getting worse. It's not getting better.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Terry Papas.
When you consider the District Six mission, vision, and values, where do your personal values align with those of District Six?
I'm passionate about customer care, always have been. I think if we provide great customer service, then we can help in a lot of ways. We may not always have the answer that everybody wants to hear, but if they feel cared for, if they feel listened to, if they feel that what they have to say has matter and has weight, then we can make a difference no matter what. So I'm very strongly for meeting people where they're at and providing appropriate customer care and listening.
And then as a follow-up, what do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
I know that there are a lot of political aspirations in terms of how we see our kids and how they're improving in the United States and how we're functioning as a whole in educating our children. Yes, education. I will always believe that the single most important thing that we can teach children is that they have the ability to choose. That is their superhuman power, is the ability to choose. And that translates into all different arenas and all different areas. So I will continue to support that value base and that value set for me and believe that children can move forward and grow. And I will always, I'm a very, how do I say that? I believe in the simple things. I believe in getting back to the simple things. And if somebody believes that they matter and that they have value and worth, then they will be able to move forward in their life, no matter what the circumstances look like, no matter what the world says or what the nation is like. If they believe that what they have to say matters and that they're important and they have value as a person, then they can move forward no matter what happens. And I will always come from that perspective of empowerment as opposed to just on the side. The thing that we devalue the most in our society is the very young and the very aged. It's been that way forever. But if we teach children that it doesn't matter what society says, it matters what you believe about yourself, if we come from that perspective and teach them that value set, I matter. What I have to say matters. I don't have to have agreement with everybody. I just need to know that it matters for me and that it's a part of who I am, then it won't, they'll be able to move forward in their lives and do what they need to do, regardless of what's happening outside of them. I think too often, people, including children, look at the outward circumstances to reflect their value and worth internally. It's never going to work that way. It's never going to work that way. If we believe that we have value and worth and that's unshakable in our core, then it won't matter what happens outwards because we'll know that we matter and that we have value. So I will always come back to that very simple baseline in everything that I decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Rob Norwood.
What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues facing Greeley-Evan School District Six?
Our suicide rate, our overdose rate, our criminal activities of our youth. I'm very concerned about it. I'm very concerned about the escalation. We had three attempted murders over the summer. That's really rare for Greeley area for us to have that many in one concentrated couple of months. It's a concern. I don't see it dissipating. I see it increasing in terms of the crimes and what we're seeing and how we're responding to calls. And it boils back to identity and not believing, I can't tell you how many conversations I have with kids where they feel like there's, where the words are, our society has no hope, our government has no hope, our country has no hope. Therefore, I have no hope, and there's no point in me being here. So it's not a far stretch for a child to move from, "I don't want to go to school today," and I'm throwing a fit because I don't want to go to school today, to, "If you don't give me something, then I'm going to kill myself." It's not very far when there's no hope. It doesn't take that big of a stretch. That is, that is my biggest concern in moving forward, is that our kids stop looking at outward things to identify their value and worth.
Thank you. Next question will be asked by Ms. Terry Papas.
Please share your plan for being available to do five to 10 hours of board education work per week.
I've already spoken with my employer, so it's not, it's not a concern in terms of what they're saying. They'll support me in whatever needs to be done. I believe in the right time, the right person at the right time. So I'm hoping that's me, but maybe it's not. Maybe it's somebody else. But I've already done the background to work with the people who are involved to just make sure that it's okay. So I've gotten the affirmative that it's okay and they'll work with me, so that's what I'm most, I don't think it'll be a problem.
Well, we have one last question.
Sure.
And that is, is there anything that you would like us to know about you that you haven't had a chance to share? Or do you have a closing statement?
I love Greeley. I came to Greeley the first time when I was 12 and 13 years old from Montana. We used to come down here for the jazz festivals and compete. I knew then that at some point I would be back at Greeley. It's just, now my life has taken me a lot of different areas. I lived in Alaska for five years. I've lived in Montana and Wyoming for several years, but I ended up back here. And at first, I was like, not sure I want to stay in Greeley all that long. But I never left, and now I've bought a home in city central Greeley, and it feels, it feels like home. What I love about Greeley is there's no pretense. We're exactly who we are. We're not really pretending to be anything that we're not. It makes every interaction I've had authentic. It makes what I've done in the Boys and Girls Clubs with the communities authentic. I left the Boys and Girls Club because I couldn't do more in the community in terms of helping families. That's why I went back into mental health. Crisis is my home. I love crisis work, always have. It's very real moments, and we get to figure out exactly what's going on. I love our police departments, our fire department. I love how we collaborate and work together. We might have conflict and we might disagree, but we listen and try to figure it out moving forward. Probably a bit idealistic, but I think that's what spurs my hope in seeing things move forward and grow and become better in Greeley. I do believe that people will pay attention to what Greeley is doing first, and then they will make, other places will make decisions based on how Greeley is changing. I do believe we have the best response system in the state of Colorado. I will always say that wherever I go, I work with the best, and I believe that. I believe that. And I'm passionate about staying in Greeley and continuing to do what I can wherever I can.
Again, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for taking the time to apply and taking the time with us tonight. I do want to just go over a few next steps with you, just so that you know what the timeframe looks like. And first of all, we want you to know we won't be making a decision tonight.
Of course.
We will, we will make a decision at our board meeting on November 14th.
Okay.
Then we were asking our candidates to hold the afternoon of the 16th, in case they're selected, so that that 16th, you would be potentially sworn in, and then you would be seated with the board if you're selected on November 28th. That would be the next board meeting. That's the first Monday after Thanksgiving. I just want to make sure that everyone has that on their calendar.
Right.
And then we have a professional development conference called CASB that we attend on November 30th, December 1st, and December 2nd, and we're asking if possible that the candidates hold those three days, in case they're selected, that they could attend that conference with us. And so those are the next steps. And again, thank you for your time and for taking the time and for being with us tonight.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Welcome back. We are concluding our recess here for our fifth board interview for Ms. Mariah Foster, and this will be a Zoom interview. And so if we can bring Ms. Foster up, please. Hi, Ms. Foster. Welcome via Zoom. Thank you for being here and taking the time to be here. Thank you for taking the time to apply for this position. And we have just 30 minutes with you, and we want to be, we need to be very strict with that 30 minutes, and we have eight questions. So I want to dive right in and just start asking those questions, and various board members will ask different questions to you. So, Ms. Foster, why do you want to be considered for the Greeley-Evan School District Six Board of Education?
Absolutely. So thank you so much for taking the time to allow me to speak, get to know me a little bit better, as well as accommodating a Zoom call. It really means a lot to myself and my family member that I'm helping out tonight as I'm out of town. So why do I want to be on the board? I am someone who comes from the world of education. I come from a family of educators. I grew up in the district. I went through public schools here. I'm really passionate about youth advocacy. I think I'm really, I'm really honestly inspired by a lot of the direction that the board and the school district are going currently. I know they've been distributing some information about the Innovation 2030 plan, and there is so much on here from the mission and the vision to the values to a lot of the action steps that I also feel very passionately about when it comes to improving, continuously improving and looking for ways to really make our school district the best in the world, shall we say. So yeah, so I appreciate the consideration. I would just love to be a part of it. I'm someone who is all about service and public service, so I've been looking for opportunities to do so in giving back. And I love that this board is one that is not supposed to be political, where we work with the entire community. We have lots of diverse voices represented, and we all just want to get things done and see the district succeed in its wonderful missions. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And I have just a follow-up question. If you were to be selected, do you plan to run for election in November of 2023?
Oh, absolutely. If I was given the chance to be a part of it, I would definitely want to then continue and hopefully justify myself and see public support for my contributions to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Natalie Mash.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District Six and District Six schools.
Fabulous. So I don't know if the public gets to see my resume, but I have worked in a lot of positions throughout the school district, as well as volunteered in a lot of district schools, community organizations. I have a long history of volunteerism that often involves providing quality programming for kids or being an advocate for children. So when it comes specifically to the district, I basically grew up in schools because my single mother was a teacher in the district and retired after 30-plus years. She still continues to volunteer multiple days a week. So teaching really is in my blood. Even my grandparents were teachers. So a lot of my early memories were helping out at school and just assisting my mom in that role. So it's no surprise when I got older that I also ended up in leadership positions in and out of schools. So like I said, I've been through the public school system. I went to Madison Elementary, Franklin Middle School, and I graduated from Northridge High School. From there, I've been able to... From there, I've been able to serve as an assistant in HR and human resources. I worked to help facilitate some of the record-keeping transition from physical paper copies to digital records. That was when I was a little bit younger. More recently, I've had a number of positions in schools. I've worked basically as a para and an instructional assistant for kindergarten and early elementary. And then I've also worked as a special education assistant for middle school. I've also had positions where I'm coming in to teach specials, especially, especially the specials of music, creative writing, visual arts, really all of the above. Let's see. And so most recently too, I currently work as an English teacher for the Immigrant and Refugee Center in Northern Colorado, which has kind of a very close partnership relationship with, with the district. So it's not exactly one of our public schools, but it works very closely in tandem. So that, that is my current role in relationship to the district. A little bit of everything.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Bentley.
Individual board members have no authority, but the board as a whole has a collective authority. What skills would you bring that would enhance the functioning of this board as a whole?
Definitely. So I have a number of, I would say, technical skills that contribute to my ability to do a lot of the, the policy review types of, the policy review jobs that the board has. So some of the more technical components of the position. I also have spent a lot of my young professional life in the military. And so I have a lot of strong thoughts about what leadership looks like, what it means to be a follower and an effective member of a team, what it means to work with a variety of different people who might have different opinions about different, yeah, any, any of the issues that you, I'm sure you have seen. I have some, some dogs coming in to say hello. I apologize about that. So yeah, a variety of hard skills and soft skills, the ability to work as a team, enthusiasm, passion, youth, all of the above. And really, really, I think at the core of that is my commitment to service. Like I said, I felt really passionately about being in the military. I've always worked in volunteers and roles where I am able to advocate for either young people or people who might be otherwise disadvantaged or marginalized. And so being able to be a public servant and get to synthesize the voices that are there in our community and reflect those voices in, in decision-making as a collective, I think is incredibly important. And it would be something I would be excited to do and honored to do along with you all.
Thank you. Next question will be asked by Ms. Taylor Sullivan.
When thinking about our Innovative 2030 Strategic Plan, what focus area are you most interested in having an impact and why?
Oh, excellent question. Like I mentioned, I am really inspired by a lot of what I see here. There, there's not enough time for me to go on, I think, about all of the things that I like. So instead, maybe I would focus on, I think, a couple of the areas that I'd like to draw a little more attention to. I love the way that this plan is talking about a student focus. And absolutely, everything that we do should focus on the success, the well-being, the health, the growth, the developments, the support of our students. And from there, I also really like that we are talking about building positive relationships, both with families, with community partners, like all of this, I think, is incredibly important. What I struggled a little bit with as I'm looking over this plan is I feel like staff are a little bit left in limbo because at times it seems like the verbiage of this plan is including staff as part of the "we" of the district. So when the, when the plan talks about being able to provide a personalized education to every student, that is being done by staff members. So I think it's, it's something that we can't say "we" as the district are doing. Really, I want to make sure we're always remembering that this is people. This is our incredible staff, our teachers, our support staff, everyone who is a part of that. At the same time, so then the few things that are listed about the staff as a different component felt a lot less relational to me. You know, we talk about building relationships and partnerships with families, building relationships and partnerships with community, but then when we're talking about staff, the terms that are used here are hiring and retaining. And as far as of value goes, I, I worry a little bit about that verbiage being so technical to kind of the internal goings-on of how do we retain staff? And looking a little further into it, I do like that we are focusing on diversity. We're focusing on trying to make sure that our district and its staff is representative of the community. But I, I have a few concerns again in some of the wording in here about how it seems like we are, it seems like the district is trying to think if we are able to hire, you know, certain quotas of, of whichever diverse factor this might be. Also, understanding of diversity as, you know, socioeconomic backgrounds, personal beliefs, you know, lots, diversity can mean a lot of things. So I want us to be thinking about recruiting a diverse workforce, but I, I want to make sure that it's not us thinking if we hire people, then the culture will change. It has to work the other way around, right? We have to make sure that we have a strong, thriving, healthy culture where everyone, not only it can feel welcome and safe, but feels excited to become a part of our team. So I think instead of thinking we need to focus on hiring and then the culture will change, we really have to start at that, that interpersonal focus and say, if, if our, if our school district is doing all of the things that support a healthy, positive community in our, in our workforce, a healthy, positive culture, that will attract in and retain the talents and the amazing people that we want to continue bringing into our team. So I think being an advocate for staff is definitely one of the main places that I feel like I could bring some insight as someone who knows a lot about both the classified and the certified worlds of working for District Six. So I think, I think, I know that was a little bit of a long answer, but I, I would, to bring it back, I think that being an advocate for staff and making sure that they are being fully supported in their role as part of the district and also in relation to the district and its leaders and its policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from Ms. Terry Pappas.
When you consider the District Six mission, vision, and values, where do your personal values align with those of District Six?
I, I might have mentioned, I feel like I'm a little bit overly enthusiastic, but really, one of the reasons that I, I thought, you know what, I, I want to serve and I think this is a good place for me is because I am legitimately inspired by what I see. The fact that we're talking about personalizing education, the fact that we're really considering not just college as the only outcome of, of, as an initial and a secondary education, we're also talking about career readiness, the fact even that we're focusing on this concept of innovation. One of the schools that I've worked at the most in Greeley has been the Fred Chartis School of Innovation. And I have been, I am just in awe and inspired by the work that they are doing there. And I think that a lot of, a lot of what they have to offer should be also developed or integrated or used as models for, for other schools and other places in the districts to fully personalize education, to fully empower teachers, to fully make sure that we are really setting our students up for success in a, in a changing future, right? And like I said, I think also, I think the values also align pretty well outside of that one caveat that I said, I just, I don't think that we quite went far enough as far as our verbiage about relationship with staff. But other than that, I think, you know, committing to excellence, definitely that diversity is not only a strength, but necessary for any well-functioning organization. And then again, that relationship piece. If, if anything, I can repeat myself over and over, I'd like to keep coming back to people. You know, the school board works with numbers and policies and budgets, but really, at the end of the day, we cannot forget that we are focused on students as whole people and staff members as whole people and families as whole people. And our community is a great conglomeration of all of these. So in, in summation and shorts, all of the above. I'm, I'm really excited and I'm, I'm here to support it and here to serve alongside you all.
And then as a follow-up, what do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
I think, I think my answer is pretty similar. Like I said, I, I think it's not only, I think it's not only something that we should do when we're talking about being innovative, but it's a necessity. Because as we've seen, you know, through the last few years, the, there are so many parts of education that are constantly changing and that will only continue to change more, whether that's through the use of technology or different kinds of resources. If we are not thinking very long-term and staying ahead of the game, we are already behind. And I think a lot of these concepts that I see are people who are much more experienced and much more technically educated than I, coming up with some great ideas as far as how to get us where we want to be and how to keep up and continually improve, like the, is that the mission or one of our values? Yeah, I love that continuous improvement, right? Our work is never done. There's always more to do. So hopefully I can do that with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Rob Norwood.
What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues facing Greeley Evans School District Six?
That is an excellent question. I think that many of the bigger issues we're experiencing are often multifaceted, which is why they are some of the bigger problems. You know, things often, any of the easier problems have been solved already. My, my brain kind of immediately goes to issues about equity and access. I think, I believe that education is absolutely a right and it's a great equalizer among people. And so it's really important to me that everyone has similar access to resources. So when I think about the students and the populations that I work with, especially at the refugee center, I see a lot of need in our community and I see a lot of opportunities to better connect people with resources. So I think, I think that that is maybe one of the biggest problems I would, I would see as like a general umbrella statement that I can talk about in, you know, one or two minutes. Because I, I believe and I see that our community has, has lots of resources and often the problem is that we're not always connecting people with the resources that they need at the right time. So I think that with a little bit of creative thinking and a little bit of discussion amongst teams, that if we start to come up with more creative solutions, we can solve a lot of these resource-based questions and allow, allow all of the amazing people in our, in our district to continue either learning or doing or providing the services that they need to, to the best of their ability.
Thank you. Our next question is from Ms. Terry Pappas.
So please share your plan for being available to do five to 10 hours of board education per week.
One of the reasons that I'm specifically running now, as someone who thinks about the future and thinks about different ways that I can serve in capacities throughout my life, throughout the rest of my life, is that my schedule is a little bit unique. So like I said, I work part-time as an English teacher at the Northern Colorado Immigrant and Refugee Center. And most of us that work there are only part-time because of the nature of nonprofit. So I only have commitments there Tuesday, Thursday mornings. And then my other job that I have is working at Ames Community College. I work as a work-study. In parts, I work in the ceramic studio where we have a team of people, you know, keeping the kilns going, keeping everything clean, helping students out with whatever they need. And then sometimes I also work with their Center for Equity and Inclusion as their minutes taker for meetings. And sometimes I do special research projects for them as well. So outside of those two days a week where I'm working at the refugee center, the rest of those hours are pretty open and flexible. So that's another reason that I decided to run now is because I know I have a unique opportunity to really be there and to really be this advocate and perform the duties of the board in a way that I might not be able to in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one final question, Ms. Foster, and that is, is there anything that you would like us to know about you that you haven't had a chance to share? Or do you have a closing statement?
I know that at least the board has access to kind of some of my documents and my answers and again, my resume. When I was answering questions, I feel like I was very general about saying that I think one of my strongest assets is that I have a wide breadth of experience and curiosities and understandings. And so I hope that seeing my resume, you, I'm someone who I think that actions speak louder than words. So getting to see all of my experience in schools, as a volunteer, as an advocate for students, as someone who's run student programming in a lot of varieties, I hope that that will help maybe clarify that. And I look forward to having more conversations about any one of these action points that is hard to sum up in a, in a small amount of time or a small amount of words. Past that, I think my closing statement would just be that I really, I really appreciate, I cannot say enough, I appreciate and admire everything that you all are doing, that the superintendent is doing. I am, I am blown away by the work that I see being done by our staff, by our teachers, by our students. It, it really is phenomenal when you are in schools or when you're in populations of people who are excited to learn. That, that fuels me, that fuels me. That is what I want to serve. I want to continue making sure that people are able to do what they are passionate about, as well as just to always remember that no matter what the board is doing, to not forget people, to not forget that we are talking about whole students, that we are talking about families, that we are talking about the people that make up the community, even as we're dealing with numbers and policies and, and all of these things that might sometimes make us want to forget. So thank you again. I so appreciate the time. I'm glad we got all the questions in. And I wish anyone who fills the vacancy the, the very best of luck and I hope they continue all the good work you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Thank you again for taking the time to apply and taking the time to interview with us tonight. I do want to go over just some next steps for you and, and just so, I think you're aware, but we will not make a decision tonight. We will make this decision at our next board meeting on November 14th. Our hope is that all of our candidates will hold the afternoon of November 16th available so that they can, whoever is selected can be sworn in as the next board member. And then that person will be seated with us on November 28th. That's the first Monday after Thanksgiving. So we're wanting to make sure everyone knows that that is, that is our next board meeting and they will need to be present there. And then we're also asking that, if possible, that all of our candidates hold November 30th, December 1st and December 2nd for the CASB Conference. That's our professional development conference. And we know that this is last minute to some degree, but asking if you can hold those dates to please, to please do so, but please do hold the, the afternoon of the 16th and the night of the 28th, should you be selected. Again, we thank you for, for joining us tonight and for your time here.
Thanks so much again.
We are back from our recess and here with our, our last candidate for the evening, Mr. Scott Rankin. Thank you, Mr. Rankin, for being here tonight. Thank you for taking the time to fill out the, the application and taking the time to be with us. We have just 30 minutes for each candidate, so we want to, and we have eight questions, so we want to make sure that we give you as much time as possible to answer those questions. So we're just going to dive right in, okay? So I'll ask the first question. What do you want to be, or why do you want to be considered for the Greeley Evans School District Six Board of Education?
Well, I believe I gave the answer in my information I gave, but I can repeat that. Would that be appropriate to do since I've already completed it? So I stated I'm interested in building on past successes in the district. Alternatively, I am in favor of making changes or eliminating things that don't work or have limited success. I would like to improve the relationship of the district and the community. I would like to assist in improving the test scores of all students. I wish to foster parent involvement with their students. I want to use the available resources of the district in the most efficient and meaningful ways possible. I also wish to help maintain and improve the infrastructure of the district by looking ahead and funding those needs into the future. I also wish to provide for the security and safety of students while they attend class or are participating in school activities.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Follow-up question. Do you plan to run for election if you're selected in November of 2020, 2023?
It's too early to answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Our next question will come from Ms. Natalie Mash.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District Six and District Six Schools.
Please share your relationship and involvement with District Six and District Six schools.
I have a daughter who attended Krista McCullough Elementary School, Franklin Middle School, and Northridge High School. I have clients of mine who are employees of the district. I serve, I currently serve on the Mel Lovey Override Citizen Oversight Committee. I served on the Budget Advisory Committee in the past. I was a Board of Education Director from 2011 to 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Next question will come from Mr. Paolo Bentley.
Individual board members have no authority, but the board as a whole has a collective authority. What skills would you bring that would enhance the functioning of the board as a whole?
I currently serve on two HOA boards. One is comprised of commercial property and the other is residential property. The commercial property HOA is called College Green Office Park and is, my position is president. The residential HOA is called Kelly Farms Owners Association and my position is treasurer. Both HOAs require board and decision-making by the board members. We seek input from community members, obtain bids for contracted grounds, maintenance, and upkeep, implement and approve a budget each year, review and implement policies and procedures, hire and supervise accounting and management firms, attend online seminars about the responsibilities and duties of being an HOA board member. Further, I've been self-employed for 30-plus years. I have a lot of experience with operations and other aspects of running a business.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Our next question will be asked by Ms. Taylor Sullivan.
When thinking about our Innovation 2030 strategic plan, what focus are you most interested in having an impact and why?
Well, I'll reiterate what I said earlier, which would be trying to improve on what's been done so far. And focus would be improving proficiency and bringing up the percentage of students proficient in the various English, math, and various studies.
Next question is from Ms. Terry Pappas.
When you consider the District Six mission, vision, and values, where do your personal values align with those of District Six?
Well, I'd say they're very similar. I don't know if I can elaborate, but give, give students the opportunity to succeed and try to encourage them and help them in any way possible based on their experiences and their lifestyle.
And then I have a follow-up question to that. What do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
Well, I'm not sure really what direction you're inferring or talking about. Could you be more specific?
I can't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
No.
Okay.
You asked, well, sure, you can repeat it, that's fine. Do you mind repeating it?
No, I don't mind. What do you think about the direction the school district is heading?
I'm not sure. I don't know. I think it's going in the right direction, but I think sometimes the only way to know what direction you're going into is when you look in the past to see what's happened.
Next question comes from Mr. Rob Norwood.
What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues facing Greeley Evans School District Six?
Well, I know one issue would be hiring qualified people, whether it's teachers, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's various positions that are open or in a competitive marketplace. I think that's an issue. One issue being addressed is infrastructure, so I think that's a concern, although that Increased enrollment in the future, which has to do with infrastructure. I guess those would be my two top items.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Next question is being asked by Ms. Terry Pappas.
So please share your plan for being available to do five to 10 hours of board of education work per week.
My plan or whether I'm able to do that? Yes, I looked at the schedule. I know the commitment. It's a big commitment. I've experienced it in the past. And one thing that's nice is you can see the schedule for quite a few weeks at a time so you can plan for it. So I do work full-time, but I have a flexible schedule. In other words, I can kind of plan my schedule around what I need to.
Thank you.
And a question, Mr. Rankin, is there anything you would like us to know about you that you haven't had a chance to share? Or do you have a closing comment?
Well, in regards to being a board member, I don't think so. And in regards to my personal life, I don't know really if there's anything that is worthwhile sharing as far as my duties and responsibilities on the board.
Well, thank you for being here tonight and for taking the time, Mr. Rankin. We do appreciate it. Just want to let you go, let you know about the next steps. So we won't make a decision tonight, but we'll make a decision November 14th at that board meeting. We are asking all of our candidates to, to hold the, the afternoon of November 16th for the swearing-in ceremony. So should you be selected, we would plan to swear you in on November 16th. And then to also hold the night of the 28th, the person that is sworn in will then be seated on, at that board meeting on November 28th. That's the Monday right after Thanksgiving, so we're just making sure everyone is aware of that. And then our hope is that everyone can hold to some degree. We know it's late notice, but November 30th, December 1st, and December 2nd for the CASB Conference, which is our personal, our professional development conference. And again, realize that this is a large commitment in such a short amount of time, but if you have the availability, we'd ask that you hold that as well. So thank you for being here tonight. Those are all of our board candidates to, to be interviewed tonight. We have reserved just some time to, to have a debrief and, and see if there are our thoughts that, that anyone wants to, wants to share about candidates or about the process. And so we will, you can just buzz in and we'll call on you. I'll just start off as you guys are gathering thoughts and simply say that, one, it, it's great to have so many candidates. One thing it was, I really enjoyed hearing about was the love of Greeley. I heard that again and again and again, that, that we have these candidates who wanted to show up because of how much they, they love this community and how, how whether they came from Mexico or Montana, that, that they found a home here and believe this to be their home and want to, want to serve. It's also encouraging to, to hear so many positive experiences with District Six and that, and that too inspire different people to, to want to serve and, and to be part of this. And yeah, it was a, it is, is encouraging to me that, that we have so many, so many good candidates come out for this. And I'll stop now that somebody else has buzzed in. Mr. Norwood?
I just want to echo what you said, Mr. Matthews, and I was really impressed with the way that people are involved in certain aspects of the community and the school district and want to continue to be involved by joining the board. I was really impressed with the, some of the answers and some of the organizations that a lot of our candidates were involved in. It's, it's impressive.
Ms. Pappas?
Yeah, that was one of my noticings as well, and then I just identified a few other, couple other themes that I heard from all, well, from most of the applicants. Parent involvement, parent engagement is high on the priority list for most candidates. Just resources, access to resources and how we allocate resources is important. And then hiring qualified people, that was mentioned by most candidates. And then just wanting to make a difference. I think that, yeah, I think that's all I'll say.
I know it takes a, it takes a while to, when we have to go back and, and look at what candidate said and, and also look at that in terms of also comparison, what they, what they sent us to begin to have a decision, but those are good initial thoughts. So are there any other, any other comments or, or questions? Any comments about the, the process or anything that we need to do before our board meeting and our, and our vote? I'm not hearing any, and so there, there's no additional business on, on our agenda tonight. And so, yeah, this special work set, work session, this special meeting is adjourned. Thank you.